Call to order, the Withfield Town Council meeting, Monday, November 24th, 2025, at 6:00 PM, held in the Municipal Building at 150 East Monroe Street, Withfield, Virginia. We do have a quorum. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Mayor Candace Johnson.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have it built in for recess if necessary? Next is the approval of the agenda. I'll need a question, please.
Madam Mayor, at this time, I would like to amend the agenda. Item 14A to include a closed meeting pursuant to State Statute 2.2-3711A, consultation with legal counsel regarding offense at a town-owned cemetery.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? I think this will be a roll call vote. Start with Councilman Hand, please.
Aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Next is the consent agenda as presented or somehow amended. The minutes of the work session and the regular meeting of November 10th, 2025 requires a motion.
May.
A motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion? Here are none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Any opposed? Next on the agenda is a public hearing to consider appropriations to the fiscal year 2025-26 budget in order to amend our departmental budgets due to unexpected expenditures during the fiscal year. We'll have a staff report by Town Treasurer Angela Pendleton, please.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Okay, so we have to do the public hearing because the amount of budget revisions are over the 1% of the total budget. So, all these items listed should all look familiar to you because they've all been approved through different meetings. But if you have any questions about anything, just let me know.
Any questions for Pendleton before we open up the... All right, now, now, open up the public hearing to receive comments regarding appropriations to the fiscal year 2025-26 budget. Is anybody here in the audience that would like to speak towards that? Here are none. We will close the public hearing. Move forward to consideration by the Town Council to adopt appropriations to the fiscal year 2025-26 budget in order to amend departmental budgets due to unexpected expenditures during the fiscal year. Do I need a motion?
May.
Do I have a motion and a second? Am I correct? No, it's a motion and second. I don't care who said it. Motion and second. Is there any discussion? Right here, none. This will be a roll call vote. We start with Vice Mayor Johnson, please.
Johnson, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Joseph Hand, aye.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is actually Citizens Period, and I think we do have someone that's signed in to speak, and that would be Terry Humberger. And if you'll state your name and your address, and we have, it's 10 minutes on the...
All right, my name's Terry Humberger, and I live at 675 Laurel Run, Whipple. But I spoke to them in October 27th about water targets. And then somebody said something about the problem with the homeless and the backpackers. All I done was confirmed what they said, and the Town Council, y'all got me fired. And I'm 71 years old today, and I had to work just to make ends meet. Y'all took my livelihood away from me over something y'all didn't like because I said. And y'all held me accountable for what I said. So, y'all ought to be held accountable for what y'all said about the Second Amendment. Y'all tried to pass it in good presentation and everything else, in which it was wrong, but they didn't nobody get fired over it. But I got fired over what I said. I just wanted against the policy. I didn't try to go against the Constitution. So, where's y'all's accountability at?
Well, sir, I don't think the Town Council specifically got you fired, and I do have a little letter here I could read to you.
Well, I've got, I've got a letter too, lady.
Okay.
And it just wasn't one person that, that, y'all will say it's hearsay, but I was told that there were several people called, and I can imagine that it wasn't nobody that I hired or anybody else. So, I'm pretty sure I know where it come from.
Well, I think it was your supervisor that, or that you were working for is the one that let you go. Is that not correct?
Yes, but y'all the ones that went to it. Y'all probably didn't even discuss the problem about the homeless or anything else. All y'all wanted to discuss was about getting me fired. They wouldn't have known nothing about y'all didn't go out there after the tape and show them the tape. But no, y'all showed them the tape from the beginning to the end. She told me she washed it three times. If y'all just wanted to get me fired, all y'all ought to show them is what I said that would have got me fired. But no, y'all had to build me up as a racist person, and to a point I am. But I raised a girl from the time she was six years old, and she's 19 right now. And the reason she's with me is her mother is with another woman, and her, and her mother took another woman over her young. And I ain't no kind of this girl whatsoever, but I've raised her for the last 13 years. And she took care of herself. She's got her own job. She makes, she pays, she's got a truck. She makes her own payment. But now, I'm gonna lose everything I got because of what y'all done, and which I've been divorced, so I know what it's like about to have nothing. But I'd like to thank y'all for getting me fired.
Sir, I would like to, sir, I'd like to speak to you for one second, please. I did, so I serve on the District 3 governmental board. They have their own policies.
I know they have their own policies. Y'all, y'all told me when I was up here, y'all trying to pull stuff out of me. I said I drove a blue bus. One of the other ones up here said for District 3, Mountain Links, and I agreed. And then it went all down the road, and I said something about hauling stuff. Well, they said, well, don't District 3 have policies to cover that? And I said, yes. Well, that's all it took, that I said something in public. So, there goes my job. And I'm 71 years old today.
Yes, sir.
And I'm gonna lose everything I got over what y'all done. Y'all know how tight things are.
Yes, sir.
And...
I want you to know personally, I did not contact anybody concerning you.
Well, I, I know some, some of the...
I think it's okay for us to defend ourselves and just say, sir, I didn't do that. Because I had no control over what District 3 does, zero control over that. But I, I'm sorry, I, but I did not contact anybody and ask for you to be fired. I just want you to know that.
Well, you probably didn't, but some, some people did.
I don't think anybody on this board...
I'm gonna speak for myself. I have not, I would not and did not ask for you to be terminated. I didn't know anything about you losing your job until you just said so. So, I'm, I'm not responsible for that.
Well, I was in here on Monday night, and I was in the mountain doing deer scouting on Friday. My supervisor called me and told me I needed to be at Marine at 11 o'clock something.
Well, Candace Johnson never made a phone call to anybody about what you said here at this council meeting. You have the right to speak.
Well, somebody went out there with the video from the meeting on Monday night.
That's not me, sir.
Well, I know somebody did, because I was told that from horse and mare.
The video is, is open to the public.
I know it's open to the public, but she wouldn't have seen unless somebody told her to look or show it to her, because she says she washed it three different times.
I did hear her make a conversation. She had received a call from Hope. She had a complaint from Hope. She told me that, and...
Well, I ain't ever helped nobody from Hope.
Just gonna share that with you, sir. That's all I know about it, though.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very sorry, sir.
I'll be homeless now, being digging out the rest of it.
There's nobody else that has signified that they wanted to come speak, so we will move forward. Next is a presentation to Town Council, presentation by Melissa Parsons, Director of the Withfield County Emergency Communications Center, to introduce herself and to provide an update on the Emergency Communications Center. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the council community, thank you for having me. Sorry it's taken me just a little bit to get here, but I've had some personal things go up, but, you know, family life gets in the way sometimes and we have to take care of things. But I wanted to come to the council meeting, introduce myself, give you a little overview of what we do in the 911 center and what our plans are for future, things that we have going on, things that we might need, and just kind of establish a really good working relationship with members of the council and the communities that we serve. So, I won't bore you too much about me, but just a tiny bit of a background. I am from Smith County, Smith County native, Blaine County resident, used to live in Withfield a few years ago, up in the Piney section. 35 years in public safety. I've served in different roles, including a 911 coordinator, an addresser in the, in the county, Smith County trainer, a manager. So, I've worked my way up, started out in 1992, a long time ago, in this business. And then I'm currently the dispatch training coordinator at the Law Enforcement Academy in Bristol. So, not only do I work with dispatchers, I also work with their training that's mandated by the state of Virginia. Just to give you a little center overview, everybody knows what 911 is. Everybody knows that you call 911 when you need emergency services, but I don't think they really know that we serve as a hub 24/7 for all public safety disciplines, police, fire, EMS, public works, VDOT, road, city highway maintenance, all the things. We are the 24/7 hub that answers those calls. Currently, we have a total of 21 positions. They are staffed by the director. And if you look on the website, I should have said this, I have a really long title, but my working title is director, so I'll just kind of stick with that. Operations Manager, Jamie Grubbs, been there for about 10 years now, I think, so she's, she knows the ins and outs of it. We currently have 14 certified telecommunications, which is up by two since I started September 1st, but we have three in training. So, we still have a couple of vacancies, but we are at more than what we have been at recent months. Some of our training requirements, we are mandated certain amounts of training by the Department of Criminal Justice Services, much like your law enforcement partners are, the Virginia State Police. We also have the Office of Emergency Services, which is under the Virginia Department of Health. And then we're governed by in-house policies and procedures that we go by nationwide standards and local standards as well. That's kind of hard to read, so I'm not gonna try to explain it to you guys. Sorry for the small print, but, you know, there are a number of core functions that dispatch centers have. This list is not all-inclusive because we do so many more things, but we're responsible for 911 call processing and dispatching. That's taking information, relaying information, gathering information quickly, and getting it out to our responders. Interagency coordination with law, fire, and EMS. We talk to all aspects of law enforcement, town, county, state, federal government. We have to, we're responsible for that coordination between all of those disciplines that respond to your emergencies in the town and in the county. Incident management coordination. When there's a large-scale incident, you guys remember Helene, who would have ever thought that it would have impacted this far inland, but it did. We work with your state and local partners to manage those large-scale incidents, as well as just everyday incidents that come into the center. Communication support for the field operations, you know, we're constantly listening to the radio, gathering information, the things that the, our partners say on the radio. There's times when you wouldn't think that we heard it, but we did, and we documented it. And if it didn't document, it didn't happen, right? So, we do a lot of that. Public safety system, system monitoring. We get alarm calls, false alarms, some of them are true alarms. We monitor those systems. Our reverse 911, our emergency alert system, we're, we're constantly monitoring those things. Public safety systems, record and data management. If it wasn't for records management, we wouldn't have proof of what we did. So, we pride ourselves on documentation and on systems that gather data for statistics, things that you need to budget for changes, things that we need to let the communities know that we are making them safe. Emergency medical dispatch. We do have a protocol in place that when certain call types come in, we launch a program, and it helps guide, guide us with asking the right questions to be sure that we get the right responders to calls. Public education and customer service. I'm very big on customer service. I'm very big on public education. I think we need to do a better job in educating the public about our services, which I intend to do. That's in my plans. And then critical incident and disaster operations. We are all trained in the FEMA emergency management courses that help guide us through the NIMS process, all the things that the federal government has laid out that go into collaboration with the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. So, we're all trained in their aspects as well. I also, that's where I retired from in '22, was the Department of Emergency Management. So, I have a little bit of that background. But again, it's not all-inclusive. That list can't possibly be all-inclusive, but it is a lot of our core functions. So, we do have challenges, much like everybody does. Our current challenges are staffing, recruitment, and retention. It's ongoing. It's not, it's not just solely secluded to the town of Withfield or Withfield County. It's nationwide. 911 centers nationwide are facing staffing problems all day, every day. Because of staffing problems, we can't train, we can't go to conferences and network and learn more about technology and things that are going on in the world because we do have staffing shortages. The biggest reason we have staffing shortages is because it's a very high-stress work environment. No call is the same, and for 12 solid hours, they're taking calls, all back-to-back calls all the time. Could be something that's very emergent, could be something that is an emergency to someone, but not quite as high priority as, as another call. There's just a different level of stress and anxiety, if you will, with each call because we answer calls, and we don't know what's gonna happen when we answer those calls. So, it's a very high-stress environment. It's shift work, day, night, weekends, holidays. We miss families and birthdays and things, get-togethers, and all the things that go along with working night shift. You don't function correctly. You don't function good if you're not a morning person when you're on days, all the things that go along with shift work. And then the pay scale. We're at a very low pay scale in the town of Withfield and the county for our dispatchers compared to just even right up the road with the state police. We're very low, so we have that problem. We also have technology. As you guys know, it's ever-changing. We've got to adapt to it, and sometimes people don't have, they don't understand it enough, or maybe we haven't, managers haven't trained them enough on upcoming technology. We haven't raised awareness of it, so sometimes they have a hard time adapting to what does change in technology. And let's face it, today, it could be everybody understands it, tomorrow, it changes, and nobody understands it. So, that's a problem, too, that we face in the 911 center. So, just to go over some current projects that we're working on since September 1st, that when I started, we are implementing a new CAD system, which is computer-aided dispatch that gathers all the information for calls for service. And then the town is getting a new records management system, you know, that we funded through different sources, some of it grant funding, some of it just different funding sources. Procurement of new dispatch console furniture, and what that is, is just the actual desk with the ergonomics and all the things that dispatchers have to look at. In our center, they have eight screens that they monitor, and that's just the console furniture that houses all of that equipment, allows them to arrange their computer screens, so they're looking at what they need to look at, when they need to look at it to prioritize emergencies. That was all grant-funded through the state 911 board, so there's no cost there. We are currently seeking another grant opportunity to, to, for future growth and resiliency. We need a different place to go if something happens. We never have a one-stop shop, because if the one-stop shop's taken out, then we don't have emergency services. So, I'm exploring some grant opportunities there. Hopefully, that'll come to fruition. And then part of the reason I'm here is to strengthen those relationships with the, our stakeholders. Everybody here is a partner, whether you're a citizen, or you're an employee of the town, or you're an elected official. You're all our partners in the 911 center, and we want to make sure that we work together with you so that the end result is, is our communities are safe and our responders go home safe at the end of every day. We have launched an employee career progression program. We have established a step program with a, two, under two years, you come in as a Level 1 dispatcher. Two years and above, you get a little pay bump, and you come in as a Level 2. And then, I think I have it in another slide, but we're gonna talk, we're gonna hire some supervision and a full-time training coordinator as well. And that's something they haven't had there the whole time the 911 center's been in place. They've not had a career, there's no incentive. You either went, started at the bottom, and you had a chance to be the very top or the one under that, and that was it. There was no in-between, and, you know, employees are not happy if they don't have a step, a progression, a way to step up and a way to advance. So, we recognize that. And then we've also revamped the webpage of the Withfield County website that I would encourage you to pull from and post to your own town website. With that, I feel that there's a need for us to get updated contact information or information about our residential areas that residents want to share. And for instance, for the town, for the citizens, you can go to our website. If you have a special need, you have medical directives you want our responders to know about. You have a gate code. You have a barking, a dog that is known to bite, or you have somebody that's on oxygen or on a ventilator, or all these special circumstances. You can go to our website, you can pull, download the form, or open the form up and fill it out on the web, and it comes directly to me. It's secure, encrypted, nobody else gets it, so it's not like you're releasing your information to just anybody. It comes to me. And then I'll go into our system, and I will flag your address with that. And if we ever have a call to your residents, then our responders, we will be able to tell them that there's special circumstances. I know with my mother, before she passed, she had do-not-resuscitate orders. That was something we can put in the CAD system that our responders will know. You know, now that, you gotta be careful with, because it could change. Maybe you change your mind. So, we need, it's equally important to get that information, but it's very important that it's updated and correct information. There's also a place on the website for businesses to go in and do the same thing, go to that form, update their business contact information. We are very, we have a lot of discrepancies as far as when businesses change names, when they change owners. We don't have the right keyholder information. We don't have the right contact information. This is a way for your businesses to go on that webpage, update their information. The email comes to me, and I will follow up with them and make sure that we have all their current contact information. Too often, our law enforcement responders go to places, and we don't have contact information for a keyholder, so they're hanging out in the middle of the night, trying to see if anything's really going on in a business, and we don't have a way to get in touch with anybody. So, I felt that that was something that we needed to get back to. Additionally, and they weren't ready today, or I would have brought them tonight, I'll be handing out business cards to the chief for his folks when they're doing business checks. They'll hand the folks a business card, on the back's a QR code. They can take it, take some straight to that part of our website, they fill it out, comes to me. So, we don't, you know, a lot of people like to do things from their phones. I mean, we're always all, all on our phones. So, if they have a way to quickly scan a QR code and upload that information, and it comes to me, that's a better way for us to gather information about our community. So, that's what we've done. There's a lot of other things on there, but it is, and it's in a constant work in progress. So, I would encourage you to go to that, put a link to it on your website, and do some public information about it to your citizens so that they know 911 is there for them, but we cannot do anything for them if we don't have vital information about them. My goals, no secret that I'll be asking for pay increases next year, FY '27, and then hopefully each fiscal year after for a minimum of three years to try to get our dispatchers to where they're making comparable pay to our surrounding counties and our state partners. Another goal is to support employee wellness mentally and physically. Our dispatchers sit 12 hours a day. They hardly can get up sometimes to even go to the bathroom, it's so busy, and that's with full staff. We've got to focus more on them mentally and physically. They take stressful calls, they rarely get closure. They don't know what happens once the baby has died, or, or once somebody's been stabbed or some kind of horrible cause have come in. They don't routinely get closure. So, we've got to focus on them. There's, there's resources available that I intend on exploring. There's grant money for that training, grant money for some crisis intervention training, all the things that we should focus on with our responder partners. And dispatchers are first responders that I want to focus on. Additionally, they don't have avenues to, a lot of it due to the pay, they don't have the ability to join wellness centers and curves and all the things that cost additional money. I think I've, I've talked to Ms. Corbin about an option there, and I'll let her talk to you guys about that later, but, you know, we've got to figure out a way to help them as we all need to be. Myself, if I can speak for myself for sure, need to be more healthy, and a sedentary lifestyle, 12 hours a day, even though they're just working two hours and then, two days, and then they're off two, and then they work three and off two, they're so tired by the next day that who, nobody wants to do anything but sleep. So, they're busy catching up, but we've got to figure out a way to support those folks mentally and physically. I do talk about it here, hiring and promoting shift supervisors and a full-time training coordinator. We need supervision on each shift, people that are qualified, whether we hire outside or we promote within. You know, we, we've got to get good candidates to come in there and have folks, the new hires, the people that don't have a lot of experience, they've got to have somebody there on shift with them all the time to help mentor them and help grow them and help guide them and make sure we're following policies and procedures. So, that's in play. I'm a big proponent of training. I believe that you train until you can't get it wrong, which is never, right? So, you continue to train and train and train. So, we are going to either promote or hire a full-time training coordinator that focuses on QA, QC. How can we train with our law enforcement partners? How can we train with our EMS and our fire to learn all aspects of 911 and not just answering the phones? And again, I talk about expanding public outreach and awareness of 911. I believe that we ought to go back to the basics. We ought to start teaching our kids in school that 911, what it's really for. Years ago, when 911 came, came about, we did a lot of education. We taught our children that the police were good, and they're not gonna take you to jail for any reason, or that they're not here to harm you, or we don't threaten our kids with, I'll call the cops on you if you're not well. We need to get back, we're not good. We need to get back into educating our kids about 911, educating them on when to call 911, teaching them to know their own addresses and to know their phone numbers and to know who their neighbors are, to know a next-of-kin contact, because it's gonna happen. It has happened, it's gonna happen again, where kids routinely find their family members needing 911, and they don't know what to do. I think we need to educate the public on it's okay to call 911 if you don't know the admin number. I totally agree that 911 is for emergencies, but let's face it, if I don't know any number and I need help, I'm gonna call 911, and we're okay with that over there. We'll not chastise anyone for calling 911 just because we don't think it's an emergency when it could be to them. So, while we do have both numbers published on our webpage, we do have the public number, and I encourage you to post that as well on your webpage. I think that's the first time it's been done, but the 911, too. But we want the public to call us if they have a need, and we want to help them. And if we're busy, we're going to say, this is a 911 line, can I call you back, or can you call us back at this number? And most people are gonna understand that, but I think we need to get that public outreach and education back into our schools, back into our, our community meetings. You know, and that goes along with, when you have events in the town, we want to set up a 911 booth. We want to be there. We want to come into your Chautauqua festivals and get, distribute information. We want to be invited to your breakfasts and to your trunk or treats and all the things because we want to collaborate with your community. And that was a whole lot fast for me, but, you know, we remain the cornerstone of our public safety system. We serve the two towns, the county, all of your paid fire and rescue, all of your volunteer fire and rescue. We need innovation, we need recruitment, we need training, we need technology, and with all that, we'll continue to deliver dependable emergency services to your town and county. So, with that said, with your support, we'll advance and continue protecting the lives and the property of everybody that we serve, and then, you know, monitoring, and the motoring public that comes through Withfield County. There's a lot of traffic through this county, as evidenced by this week already, so... But with that said, that's kind of all I have. I really appreciate your time, and if you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them.
Ms. Parsons, how many incoming telephone lines do you have?
Good gracious. We have four 911 lines that are, you know, they roll over if they're not busy, they continuously roll over to that. And then I think we have six admin lines. Staffing-wise, we have... Staffing-wise, we have three per shift for the most part, unless there's something that's, you know, sickness or some kind of craziness going on or we get low on staff. But, hopefully by the end of the year, I'll have some stats on how many calls we've taken for the entire year, we're running those stats for next week, so we can, I can send that back to Ms. Corbin and she can give you that. But, it's a constant ringing over there for sure.
I was gonna ask you if you had a total of, or if you keep a total like that.
We do, we run monthly reports, I'm not sure if you, do you get those reports?
We get them.
Okay, yeah. So, the chief has some stats, but we run those monthly and then at the end of the year, I compare, my goal is, I wasn't here last year, but I'll compare last year to this year and then we'll provide that too, because, you know, you need to look at that, as when I'm asking for raises, you need to look at the stats too and see how much the call volume has gone up, or if it's not, or, you know, there's always justification for everything. So, yeah, I'll have those for you. You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is a presentation by Assistant Director of Public Utilities and Engineering, Andrew Austin, to provide an update on the design and administration of the wastewater treatment plant improvements project. Thank you for coming, sir.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I believe in your packet tonight, you have two documents. One is the State Water Control Board's tentatively approved with Phil Wastewater Treatment Plant Project award, which would be for $24,469,000. That would be a loan program with the potential for grant or principal forgiveness, once we have a congressionally approved budget. We will not know what that grant forgiveness will be until that budget at the federal level has been approved, so we'll wait and see. Right now, the rate on that budget, or rate on that loan, is prime rate, which is discount under market at 1.5 or 150 basis points. On the 18th, the tentative improvement became official, but we have not, we have not received the formal award letter as of today. We were told to expect it by the end of November, so, once that gets here, we will have 12 months from that formal award date to be ready to go to bid. And that's bid for construction for all these projects. So, once we found that timeline out, it's a very tight timeline to get $24 million worth of projects designed and out to bid, we went out for a request for proposal to find us a firm that can design these so that we could actually go to the market and get a good, responsible bid back to the market. That went live on the 18th, I believe, and today, we had our pre-bid or pre-proposal meeting. They open on the 3rd of December and once I have that information and we go through the selection committee, we'll bring them to Mrs. Corbin and I will see you again at the 8th council meeting to present our results and with your blessing, move forward with that design project. Basically, I just wanted to give you an update of how things are going and I do have some good news. Yeah. Today, we finalized the FEMA award for our clarifiers that were destroyed in Helene. So, the total cost of that project, as FEMA has calculated, was $5,604,000, or $5,604,090. FEMA has granted us 75% of that cost at $4,203,067. Now, it goes to VDEM and VDEM will assess if they are going to offer us any relief on that, and I do expect to get up to 20% relief on that, which will leave us with 5% of that total project cost at the end of the day. That's an amazing win.
That's wonderful news. Great work, thank you all.
So, as soon as we figure out that, I will bring that back to you as well.
Thank you so much.
Long been awaiting to get all these repairs done. All right, next on the agenda is a presentation by Town Treasurer Angela Pennington for the Town of Withfield October financial statements.
Hi again. I'm just gonna kinda work off this annual comparison snapshot, it's, pretty much summarizes all the financial statements, they're in your packet. And I just focus on the general fund, water fund and sewer funds, which is our major funds. So, revenue-wise, we're under on the general fund, this, just comparing this time last year to this time, this, last year to this year. So, we're down a little bit on general fund revenues, we're up on water and sewer revenues for a total overall 827,000 increase in revenues from last year. Expenditure-wise, we're way over, we're 1.49, nine, over in expenditures from last year. So, we, last year, we were under for everything, 980,000 this time last year, and right now, we're under 1.652888 this year, so, we're 670-some-thousand in the hole right now. We have mailed out personal property tickets and real estate tickets are about to get mailed out, so, we'll start seeing some more revenue come in from all that too. Meals and lodging and sales tax, meals is up a little bit from last year, lodging and sales tax is down, and so, we're in the hole on those totals, 63,000 from last year, so. So, we'll just have to keep our eye on our spending and hopefully, things will turn around and we'll get more revenue coming in for meals and lodging and sales tax, but everybody's kind of keeping, you know, keeping a hold of their money a little bit, because everything's so expensive, so, it's to be expected that might go down a little bit, but, we're just keeping an eye on it. And I think I'm coming back every once a month to give y'all an update, so, we're keeping an eye on it.
Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Pennington.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is to consider scheduling a public hearing for the January 12, 2026 Town Council meeting to receive comments regarding the request of Donna Leonard to amend a special exception permit approved by the Withfield Town Council on June 9, 2025 to operate an accounting and tax office on property located at 525 North 4th Street, tax parcel number 41A-127-7 in the R2 Residential Zoning District. So, we will now hear from a staff report from Assistant Town Manager Elaine Holton.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to present this agenda item. Under item 11 in your packet, you will see the application that was submitted by Ms. Donna Leonard, and for the purposes of tonight's meeting, the only responsibility that we have tonight is just to set the public hearing for January, and then in January, you will receive a full staff report and additional information about the application. If you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? All right, we're considering a Town Council to schedule a public hearing for the January 12, 2026 Town Council meeting to receive comments regarding, regarding the request of Donna Leonard to amend a special exception permit approved by the Withfield Town Council on June 9, 2025 to operate an accounting and tax office on property located at 525 North 4th Street, tax parcel number 41A-122-7 in a R2 Residential Zoning District. Need a motion?
Send a motion.
Motion, do I have a second?
Yeah.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion, questions, concerns? None, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, any opposed? That motion passes. Next on our agenda is upcoming meetings by Chief Deputy Clerk Brandy Jones, please.
I just have a couple. The Town of Withfield Municipal Offices will be closed and all services will be curtailed beginning at noon on Thursday, sorry, that's a mistake, beginning at noon on Wednesday, November 26th through Friday, November 28th, due to the Thanksgiving holiday. The next regular scheduled Withfield Town Council meeting will be held on Monday, December 8th at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers, and that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other business before we go to council? By the time, all right, council member time at this point, and out with Vice Mayor Kenneth Johnson, please.
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Atkins.
Yes, Mayor Taylor, I would like to make a motion to approve an additional four hours for this Wednesday. I believe the town is, does give the four hours. I'd like to go ahead and do like we've done before in the past and give them a full day. Like to make that motion, please, for this Wednesday, November 26, 2025.
Okay, and we have a motion before us? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, here none, this will be a roll call vote, Vice Mayor.
Johnson aye.
Taylor aye.
Anderson aye.
Um, Josephine aye.
Anything else, Ms.?
You're welcome. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I don't really have anything, but I was just gonna share with the public that the town does have three eateries that are getting ready to, some of them getting ready to open up, such as Chipotle, but we also have a Dunkin' Donuts that's, have broke ground, and a Taco Bell that has broke ground, so. And that's all exciting. That's all I have.
I don't have anything at this time. Madam Mayor.
I don't have anything, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Okay. So, is there anything else to come before council this evening? Council feels it necessary to go into a closed meeting to discuss and ensure that it's lawfully permitted to be discussed in a closed meeting. The closed meeting pursuant to 2-2-3711A1, one, one A Personnel TM, and 2.23711AA Consultation with Legal Counsel WL, and requires, and regarding defense town owned in a cemetery. So, we have those three. Need a motion?
Send a motion.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote, Mr. Hand.
Aye.
Anderson aye.
Taylor aye.
Atkins aye.
Johnson aye.
All right. That happened, so, Town Council missed something, we will now go into a closed session. Thank you all for coming.[1404.33] Thank you all for coming.
Town Council is now in open session. A motion is necessary to certify that only matters lawfully convening to the open session were discussed. Need a motion?
Same here.
Have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. This would be a roll call vote. Mr. Hahn?
Aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Is there anything else that needs to come before council this evening? Here are none. We are adjourned.
Happy Thanksgiving.